All right, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call to order today's Thursday, February 6th, meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thanks, everyone, for coming out today. If you have not done so already, please be sure to sign in at the sign-in sheet at the back of the room on the table on your way out. This helps us know who is here and how to spell your names in the event that you decide to testify or add comment on any of today's agenda or non-agenda items. Please make sure your cellphones are turned off. If they are on already, that is always much appreciated. And if you do come up to the mic to speak on one of the topics on the agenda today, please, how shall I say it? Brevity and succinctness is always appreciated. So if you can keep your comments to around three minutes or less, that would be fantastic. In terms of public announcements, I have one. We will, the Board of County Commissioners will be over in Great Falls next week for the Montana Association of Counties Midwinter Conference. So we will not be having our normal public meeting on Thursday next week. However, the following week, and this is the announcement I'd like to make, on February 19th, at 2:30 PM in the afternoon, you are all invited to this very room, the Sophie Moees Room, for a special flag dedication ceremony. We will be dedicating and installing in this chamber the flag of the Confederated Salish and Kootenay Tribes to recognize the fact that we both share a common boundary between Missoula County and the Flathead Nation, and also to recognize the fact that we, as we sit here today, are in the Aboriginal homeland of the Bitterroot Salish people. So please come on out. We'll also have an art opening at the same time. We've got a couple pieces of art on the wall already of a fairly renowned native artist, and we would love to have you participate in that art opening with some comments being made by Laura Millen and the Missoula Art Museum. The artist in question is Jean Quick-Dee Smith. So come on out if you can. Any other public announcements at this time? Okay, are there any public comments on items not on today's agenda? This is the part of the agenda where if there's anything on your mind that you want to share with us that is not already an item that you'll be speaking to, you can come on up to the microphone. Okay, seeing none. Our current claims list, this would be claims received as of January 22nd through January 29th by the Commissioner's Office, total $1,251,079.36. We've got a number of public hearings today, the first one being a bit of an oddity. So for certain types of proposed zoning changes in so-called Part 1 zoning districts, and I'm not going to go into the details of what that obscure designation means right now, but for these types of zoning changes, it must first come before what we call the Planning and Zoning Commission. So without further ado, I will open the public hearing of the Planning and Zoning Commission on a proposed removal of Part 1 zoning. And this is proposed by Snowcap LLC, and we will begin with a staff report by Lauren.
Thank you. For the record, Lauren Ryan, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This request in front of you today is to zone the subject property to two Part 2 zoning districts from a Part 1 or citizen-initiated zoning district by Snowcap LLC, whom is representative by Paul Forsting with Territorial Land Works. The subject property is located north of Highway 93 South, near Blue Mountain Road. The property is currently vacant. I want to go over the process a little bit today with this request because it is unique in that we are essentially removing the property or amending the boundaries to a Part 1 zoning district. Today's hearing is for the Planning and Zoning Commission and for the Board of County Commissioners to vote to amend the boundaries of the Part 1 zoning district and then to rezone the parcel to two Part 2 zoning districts. The request has already gone in front of the Planning Board, who made a recommendation on the Part 2 zoning request. The Planning Board cannot make a recommendation on the removal of the Part 1 zoning district. In order for the applicant to be removed from the Part 1 zoning district, they were required to get 60% of the landowner's signature within that zoning district. The applicants did receive over 60% of the landowner's signatures within the zoning district. On March 12th, if it is adopted, there will be a final resolution to adopt the Part 2 zoning districts. Here's a closer view of the U-Hoss property. The property is accessed through a 60-foot-wide private access easement through U-Hoss Ranch Lane. The property is a total of 61 acres in size. The surrounding uses to the property now are commercial, open space, and residential. The property is currently zoned in ZD #39. The zoning district was established in 1975. Permitted uses in the zoning district include single-family residential, schools, churches, parks, library, and community halls. The zoning district does not allow for any commercial development. The 2019 Missoula area land use element recommends two land use designations for this property. The Commercial Center land use designation follows the area of the property that has been shown above the 100-year floodplain elevation. The rest of the property is designated as agriculture. The Commercial Center land use designation goals are to provide for a mix of commercial and higher-intensity residential where sewer is available. Land uses primary consist of auto-oriented retail, lodging, offices, food, and automobile service. This Commercial Center land use designation covers a roughly nine-acre area of the 60-acre parcel. A majority of the parcel is designated as agriculture. The goals of the land use designation is to allow for larger tract agricultural systems where agriculture soils and irrigation are present, and to protect areas with identified hazards such as floodplains. The land uses include agriculture, residential, and activities incidental to agriculture. Here's a view of the property currently. The Bitterroot Branch Trail does run adjacent to the property. Like I said, there is some surrounding commercial, residential, and open space uses to the property. The applicants today are proposing to zone the property to match the applicable land use designations by that Missoula area land use element. The agriculture land use designated area is proposed as C-A1 Agricultural and Open and Resource zoning district. This district allows for residential, guest ranch, daycare homes, agriculture, open space, and public utilities as permitted use. The conditional uses and special exceptions in that zoning district are shown on the screen here. The nine-acre, roughly nine-acre portion of the property designated as Commercial Center by the land use element is proposed to be Zone C-C2 General Commercial. There's a number of permitted uses, as you can see here on the screen, for a variety of commercial-type uses. Residential is a permitted use in the zoning district. This shows the floodplain on the property. As you can see, the entire property is in the FEMA map floodplain. The yellow area shown on the screen is mapped to be above the 100-year floodplain elevation. The application did include elevations for the property showing this area to be outside of the floodplain. As stated earlier, the Part 2 zoning district proposed as commercial does follow the boundaries of this floodplain. The pink area of the floodplain is mapped as Zone AE 100-year floodplain, and any development in this area would require a floodplain permit. So this did go in front of the Planning Board. Planning Board voted unanimously for approval for the request. The Planning Board commented that the goals of the adopted land use element align with the proposed zoning. There was some public comment at the Planning Board hearing in regards to concern with access from a property owner who lives just north of the property here. The property owner who did make the comment, I did look after the hearing, is not within the zoning district, so they were not included in that signature process to remove themselves from the Part 1 zoning district. We had not received any public comment through the notifying process. Most agencies provided a standard response of little to no concern for the request. I did include this comment from Montana Department of Transportation regarding that the access from Highway 93 can be challenging, and obviously some safety concerns. Any commercial use proposed on the property would require an approach permit, and most likely a traffic study would be required. So staff is recommending approval of the request. The motion here, shown in front of you on the screen, is a little bit different than what is included in the staff report. This was amended slightly. I included information, or in the motion, that the property is going to be removed from the Part 1 zoning district while also being zoned to that Part 2 zoning district. So just to be aware that this motion on the screen is what we are recommending and is different than what is in the original staff report that you received. And that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Lauren. Would the applicant's representative like to speak? Mr. Forsting?
Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. Thank you, Commissioners, for meeting with us. This is the second week in a row you've met with us for this area, different zoning districts, but we appreciate you getting back together consecutive weeks. Interestingly enough, last week you met with the applicant, was Gene Mosted. And this week, well, the owners of this property are the U-Hosses, and when you read this zoning district, it's the U-Hoss-Mosted paddock. And I'm not sure who the paddocks are, but they were the primary landowners of this whole area when this zoning was set up. I was just scrambling to find the date, but I believe it was the '70s when this zoning district was set up. And so that's the uses that we, that the current zoning has. It was all developed in the '70s. And what they said there is, oh, we'd like to see this maybe more suburban, or maybe left rural and developed at a one-acre maximum density for residential unit. The property has been for sale for quite a bit, this specific property that we're asking for this request on. I can't, I don't know how long it's been, but I've seen the sign. If you drive down the Bitter, you can see a big sign there. It's for sale. And it's, they're actually, the U-Hosses are trying to sell both of their properties there. And they haven't had anybody wanting to buy it, or they've had people wanting to buy it, but there's, the residential zoning and some of the floodplain challenges have limited folks' interest in it. We've met with the county over the last several years, even prior to this application, to talk about what it would take to get to this point here. And there was always, it was always going to be a complicated road to hoe. Until the growth policy was changed last year, it just seemed like too much for any applicant to say, well, we have to change the growth policy, then we have to be let out of this zoning, and now we have to, then we have to get a new zoning district. And with the growth policy being changed last year, that kind of built some momentum for this project, and that's why you're seeing it move forward. I really appreciate the staff helping us through this complicated process. It's been, Lauren's been really great to work with on this application, and we've worked with Jenny Dixon and other folks over the years talking about what could be done here. I'm excited to see what we've brought to the table. We have, it's a 61.64-acre parcel, and 9.3 of that acreage sits above the base flood elevation, and that's what we're requesting for this commercial designation. The rest of it is below that base, or primarily below, based on what we could tell from some spot elevations we shot. That's below the flood elevation, and so there's not a lot of building potential there. And so we see a 61.64-acre parcel, and we're taking about, the usable 9.3, taking that to commercial, like some of the neighboring properties are, and then leaving the rest in this ag designation, which has really limited uses there. So it's kind of an interesting compromise. It takes landowners a long time to get to a point where they're ready to make a compromise like that. I think, you know, that folks own 60 acres. They think this is 60 very valuable acres on the highway, and, you know, I think that's a bigger discussion, but it does take somebody quite a while to realize that, hey, we've only really got 9.3 here, and we're willing to make a compromise on it and put it in this ag designation. Interesting, being brief, I'd add a couple more things. One is that we appreciate the staff's support and approval. We did get five of the six landowners to sign the petition to allow us to leave, which was great. That happened really quickly, and that's, in my experience, doesn't happen all the time. And so we were able to get them to sign, return these petitions, allowing us out. They were even willing to provide power of attorney and legal documents proving that they were the entities. All of that seems, to me and my experience, has been difficult to get. And so seeing that response back to us tells me that the folks in this zoning district also have been eyeing changes and aren't necessarily, I think they're wondering, you know, is it, are they in a position themselves, other properties, to maybe see a different zoning for their property? That's been my experience. We've talked to a lot of those neighbors. There's different aspects of the project I can go into more detail on, but I'll leave it at that right now. This is the first aspect of the project, and then we'll be back for, I think in a month, for our formal rezone approval, and that would be just with the Commissioners. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this proposal? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion from the Planning and Zoning Commission on this item? Or a motion? Don't all fight for the mic, okay?
I would move that the request to remove property legally described as tract 4 of Certificate of Survey 5877 from Part 1 Citizen Initiated Zoning District #39 and zoned to C-C2 General Commercial and C-A1 Agricultural Open Space be approved.
It's been moved in second, and any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries. We will adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission and open the public hearing of the Board of County Commissioners on this very same item. And I warned everyone, this is a little bit of an odd procedure here. Thank you, Tyler Grenant. Any public comment on this? So it's your second chance for public comment on the same item. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions? Commissioner Vero? Or?
A motion.
I will take a motion.
No questions, and I'm happy it's all aligning. So I move that, I just want to make sure that this is the correct one, that the request to remove property legally described as tract 4 of Certificate of Survey 5877 from Part 1 Citizen Initiated Zoning District 39 and zoned to C-C2 General Commercial and C-A1 Agricultural Open Space be approved.
I'll second that. And I'll just say, this seems like a good proposal and is in alignment with our land use element, which is always what we're hoping to achieve. So any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that carries. Thank you. Onto our next set of public hearings. We've got a number, actually five in total, proposed budget amendments. And what I suggest we do is that each department head or individual who will be speaking on each one of these come on up, introduce it for us, and then we will, without objection, take them as a unit to discuss and vote on. So to begin with, Jerry Marks, our Director of County Extension, want to come up and talk to us about a cut flower grant and how that triggers a budget amendment?
Yes, we are requesting a budget amendment in Fund 2841 in our project code 37312. This is for managing a grant and some additional dollars to explore the cut flower industry and see if the growers want to develop the market for that whole kind of program. We're requesting the budget amendment be $10,000. Of that amount, $8,818 is a grant from the Montana Department of Agriculture. The difference is from fees we collect from the growers that are participating in the program.
Okay, thank you. Next to that, Cindy?
So I am, hold on a second. Requesting a budget amendment to include the Drug-Free Communities Grant Funds. This is a grant that we had for five years. It supports the French Town Coalition. It's $125,000 a year. Because it's on a federal fiscal year, that's why the amount in front of you is a little bit lower. It's like $98,000 and some change. We will be including this for the next five years. We had one-year gap where we did not get this funding.
Great. Thank you. Erin?
Actually, is it 98?
Oh, we have got a question here.
Sorry.
Come on.
98 or 93? Am I looking at the?
I don't actually have it in front of me.
Oh, okay.
It's whatever's on there.
Whatever's on here is correct.
$93,750.
Yeah, it's nine months' worth because it's actually on a federal fiscal year, so the full 125 will be included in next year's budget.
And what was the reason why there was that one-year gap?
You have to reapply for funding, and we did not get, our application got turned down for that one year. And so we contracted with a grant-writing firm that was paid for through the Healthcare Foundation, and we got it the second time we applied.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Erin Kautz?
So this is a budget amendment for the County and Tribal Matching Grant that we received notice of the award at the very end of December of 2019. So it didn't make it into our budget this year. It's an 18-month grant. So what you see in front of you as for the budget amendment is for the next six months, and then the remainder of the year will be in the next budget year.
Questions? Okay. Thanks, Erin. Shane Stack, Director of Public Works.
All right, so this budget amendment is to fund DJNA to complete, basically scoping development for the overall 30% design of the build grant. So we're paying them kind of this upfront money to develop the scope, and then we'll have a second contract with them, probably will have that approved in March, and we'll have to do another budget amendment for that, be a lot larger. But, you know, this is kind of the first step.
Okay, that's a good first step. I'm not seeing Chris out there. Amanda Henthorn, do you want to impersonate Chris Lonsberry today?
Amanda Henthorn, Budget Analyst, Missoula County. This budget amendment is for labor survey. And we'll continue the project that we started last year, and it will continue into the next fiscal year. It'll be evaluating employee wages and benefits to make sure that we are competitive across the region.
Thank you. Go home and get well. Okay. Thanks for coming out. Okay, any questions on any of these five proposed budget amendments or a motion? This is a public hearing. Yeah, I'll open it up for public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I move to approve the budget amendments, so 1 through 5.
Okay, that's in order.
7A, 1 through 5.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion on the budget amendments? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. Okay, budget amendments passed. Thanks, everyone, who came out for that special presentation. Next, we have a road petition. General Pulaski Drive, and is Sam here? Is he not? Steve Nyde, come on up. It's all yours.
Yes, Steve Nyde, County Surveyors Office. I told Sam we didn't need him.
Okay. Will dazzle us.
I said, I know where you live. I'll go get you if I need you. For anyone that, this is General Pulaski Drive. It's a petition to abandon just a portion of that drive. And for anyone that doesn't know where that is, it's very near Condon. Pardon?
Sure, why don't you, so folks in the audience know what we're talking about here?
There you go. See, Sam had it all queued up.
Somebody was thinking ahead.
Yep. So the dashed line is General Pulaski Drive. Condon is just a little ways north of here, maybe a half-mile or so. And there was a road, there was a petition to abandon a portion of that right-of-way, and road viewers were assigned. And I will read the road viewer's report. "A portion of General Pulaski Drive right-of-way in the southeast one-quarter of Section 1, Township 20 North, Range 17 West, Principal Meridian, Montana. Date of viewing, January 24, 2020. In attendance, Josh Schlatnick, Missoula County Commission Chair, Shane Stack, Missoula County Public Works Director, Steve Nyde, Missoula County Land Survey Manager. At approximately 9:30 AM, the attendees arrived at the site of the subject road right-of-way. An investigation and discussion ensued. The portion of the right-of-way under consideration provides public access to two landowners. Both landowners have agreed to the abandonment. No public access to public land would be eliminated if this right-of-way is abandoned. The undersigned road viewers recommend abandoning that portion of the road right-of-way described in the petition."
So Steve, could you just take the cursor and just show us exactly the portion that's...
Can I point?
You can point, but we won't see it.
The portion to be abandoned is from this road intersection right of...
Hey, Steve, could you use the microphone? Sorry.
This is just a little residential subdivision. Is this working?
Yeah.
This long, straight stretch and this curved section are all public right-of-way. The dashed portion would continue to be public right-of-way, and the portion that's to be abandoned is basically from this lot line north to the end. All of these properties here, including this one here, is owned by the petitioners. The only other landowner who uses, or actually doesn't use it, but has legal access via this road would be this landowner here, and he has also signed the petition. The landowner here would not be affected by the abandonment. They would still have legal access via this portion.
Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment on the proposed road petition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions?
Was there any comment or discussion on the viewing day?
No, only the three of us, Josh, Shane, and myself were there. No one else attended. It was kind of a nice snowy day. We did drive up the road to the last residence there, and we actually had done an investigation via the computer system before we left and drove up there. So that's about it.
Okay. Shane, any thoughts?
I would just add, I think we were all in support of the abandonment.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then I move to approve the petition to abandon the north end of General Pulaski Drive in Remick-Swan River Tract 1, ending at the south boundary of 167 General Pulaski Drive.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Next, we have a public hearing on a proposed resolution establishing a naming policy at the Missoula County Fairgrounds. And we'll begin with a staff report from Emily Brock.
Good afternoon. So last year around this time, you directed me to implement a strategic unification plan to raise funds for Phase 2 of Fairgrounds redevelopment. The plan showed that there were, there were three fundraising campaigns for distinct spaces on the fairgrounds. One is the Rocky Mountain Exploration Center. Two is the Livestock and Equestrian Center and Rodeo Grandstands. And then three is the Ice Rinks. So that unification plan also included some key action items, which you have seen or will see completion of this month. The first was to create and sign MOUs with partners raising funds for facilities on the fairgrounds to ensure fidelity to the vision of the fairgrounds and commitment to collaboration and transparency for fundraising efforts. First MOU at the Butterfly House and Insectarium for the Rocky Mountain Exploration Center is all complete now. And the second action item was to update the bylaws of the Western Montana Fair Foundation and move that organization into becoming a functional, private fundraising partner for the fairgrounds that will focus on Livestock Center and Rodeo. that will focus on livestock center and rodeo arena and grandstands. That work is now complete, and the board is operational. And that resolution to pass on, pass the torch to that board will be on February 27. The third was to conduct public preference and strategic messaging research to discover community priorities and desires for the fairgrounds. More partners collaborated to increase the scope of the research of that project, and it's finally wrapping up. And on March 3, you will have a presentation from Em and our Strategic Services about that research. And the fourth is what you have in front of you today, which is to develop a name recognition policy for the fairgrounds that establishes procedures and expectations for recognizing private donors. Stakeholders, including you, met with our team to develop this policy. The resolution in front of you clarifies to partners and donors the expectation regarding the donation-related naming recognition of spaces, facilities, rooms, and other permanent assets on the Missoula County Fairgrounds. This policy is necessary to ensure that name recognition is equitable across the fairgrounds. However, because the projects inherently vary in scope and visibility, it allows for each fundraising campaign to have a distinct recognition system that is developed in conjunction with the Fairgrounds Department to ensure proportionality across the fairgrounds. All of the naming recognition systems will be coordinated with the fairgrounds and must be approved by the county commissioners. Likewise, all name recognition for gifts over $25,000 must also be approved by the county commissioners. However, name recognition for gifts smaller than $25,000 may be approved at the discretion of the campaign and the fairgrounds. That's things like... So, for example, one way to describe this is you guys will approve the system, which is, let's say, bricks or benches, and we will be able to give name recognition on a brick or a bench without having to come to you every time. But if it's a big name recognition, like over $25,000, we will check in with you about the specific name. So the policy also clarifies that should the name of the donor change, the recognition may also change with county commissioner approval and at the expense of the donor. That sometimes happens when companies change their names. The policy also clarifies that the name recognition may be rescinded should a donor or an honoree's integrity or character become compromised in the future. The policy also allows for name recognition without correlating donations under special circumstances and with approval from the relevant partners and the county commissioners. And an example of that, I like to say, is that maybe if somebody will have a Jerry Marks something or other, and he won't have had to give a whole bunch of money for it, his fifty years of service at the county, if should you approve, would be enough. So that's the end of my report.
Okay. Jerry Marks Public Restrooms? Is that... Jerry, come on up.
Especially the restrooms, huh? Jerry Marks from the Extension Wee District Department. The staff here has reviewed and has accepted the policy, the naming policy, and so have the folks with the Missoula Butterfly House and its Insectarium. So we endorse this policy.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. I'll open the public hearing. Any public comment on the proposed naming policy? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any questions?
No. I'm excited to see these names. I move to adopt a resolution establishing a naming policy for new and existing spaces, facilities, and rooms at the Missoula County Fairgrounds in recognition of private contributions.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Thanks for all your work on this, Emily. This is a great step in a long progression of many steps that are positive changes at the fairgrounds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we have a public hearing on a proposed family transfer. And we will begin with a staff report by Matt Heimel.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Matt Heimel with Community Planning Services. Your consideration at this public hearing is a family transfer exemption. So this is a request from Patricia Busby to use the family transfer exemption in the Montana Subdivision and Plattean Act to create and transfer one parcel to her daughter, Elizabeth Ellen Trueblood. The 90.63-acre property is located at 470 Rumble Creek Lane in the Condon area, east of Highway 83. The property is legally described as Parcel 1 of Certificate of Survey 5563 in Section 8, Township Twenty North, Range Sixteen West. This property is located within the area described in the Swan Valley Condon Comprehensive Plan from 1996. That plan designates the parcel with a rural, low-density residential land use, which recommends one dwelling per ten acres. The proposed transfer on the property will not exceed the density recommended by the plan, and the property is currently unzoned. This is the existing lot configuration. Existing Track 1 is 90.63 acres in area. It extends to the south through a narrow strip past what you see labeled as Track 2, and this area is also included in the subject property. So the proposed transfer would result in two total tracks. The existing 90.63-acre parent tract would remain in ownership by the claimant, and that would be reduced to 80.49 acres. The track to be transferred to the claimant's daughter would be south of the parent tract and will be 10.14 acres in area, including the approximately 30-by-690 connecting strip of land. The parent parcel currently has two dwelling units and multiple accessory structures. Access to the proposed transfer tract will be provided off of Rumble Creek Road to Highway 83, and the applicant has stated that the transferred tract is intended for residential use by the applicant.
Sorry, Matt. Where's the other dwelling unit?
There are... There is one house on track, proposed Track 1A. And then, just according to Department of Revenue, it lists as two dwellings. But there is one principal dwelling unit, or one principal structure, and then multiple accessory structures throughout.
Oh, okay.
And one new house would be proposed on the new Track 1B.
Thanks.
Uh, just getting my bearings. Okay. The application was sent out to county agencies for comment. Most agencies provided us with a standard response of no comment or concern. The Environmental Health Department did comment that the project requires full sanitation review or citation of an applicable exemption. Based on the facts as presented in the subdivision exemption affidavit and reviewed by staff, there does not appear to be an attempt to evade subdivision review, and I now have some questions for the applicant.
Would the applicant like to come on up to the microphone? Two for the price of one. Okay.
Ah, yeah, yeah. We got our force here. Good afternoon. I'm Arthur Buzz Busby, retired Air Force Colonel. This is my wife, Patricia Busby. We've lived in the beautiful Swan Valley for about sixteen years now. Thoroughly enjoy it. We plan on living the rest of our life there. And our daughter lives in Columbia Falls right now, but we'd like to transfer the ten acres to her because of the possibility of their, someday, building a home there and taking care of us when we reach old age, which is not too far in the future, unfortunately. And so it would work out better that way if she owned the land. There's no intent on selling the land. She's going to keep it. And just looking forward to having her out there someday.
Great. Thank you. Do you have some questions?
Yes, I have five questions. First, did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
I'm sorry, what? Did we buy the property with the intent of selling it?
Of dividing it?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
No, the eighty acres that's going to be left now cannot be divided. It's under conservation easement.
And the ten was part of twenty acres. We gave ten of that twenty to my brother and the cabin. The other ten, we kept. So that's why they're not actually contiguous.
Okay. Good, Matt.
Do you or your transferee intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Thank you. Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
No, not at all.
Will the property be developed?
No.
No.
Not if we have anything to say about it. We don't want any more neighbors.
But your daughter will have a... She'll blow the home up.
Eventually, yeah. This summer, she's hoping to put her camper and then have a fenced-in area for her dogs.
And last question. Will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
Not full-time for a long time.
Okay.
She's still working years.
All right. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you both. And thank you, Mr. Busby, for your service in the U.S. Armed Services. Mr. Jenkins, do you have anything you want to add? Okay. This is a public hearing, which I'll open. Is there any among the slim crew of members of the public out there want to speak to this item? No... Oh, okay. Come on up.
For the record, Ken Jenkins with Montana Northwest Company. There was just one thing I wanted to point out, which I think in the regulations is a rebuttable presumption of evasion. The Buzzbys did have to do some jockeying around with the ownership, which I'm sure that that happens a lot when there is true evasion going on. But there can also be that situation when it's merely the folks that have owned the property for sixteen years, and it's in a trust that isn't eligible for a family transfer. So that's the reason for the recent changes in the deed or the ownership structure.
Great. Thanks for the clarification. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion?
No. I'm going to move to approve the application by Patricia Busby to utilize a family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to an immediate family member as presented in the subdivision exemption affidavit.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And Ken, please share with the development community. This is exactly the sort of family transfers we like to see. This makes our lives easy. So, thank you. Okay. Thank you. We might take you up on that. Okay. Safe travels back up there. You bet. Absolutely. You can certainly get your money's worth and stay as long as you want, but you're free to leave, too.
Hey, thank you very much.
Yeah. Good idea to hit the road. Thank you for joining us. Thanks, Ken. Okay, last but not least, we have a continuation of a public hearing that we opened up back on January 2 with some proposed amendments to Missoula County subdivision regulations. And we will begin with a little bit of a recap from Christine DeSenzio.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Christine DeSenzio, a planner with Community and Planning Services. Like you said, today, we're continuing a hearing that first came before you on January 2. And we dove into the details last time, so I'll keep it fairly brief. What I want to cover is a review of the public notice and the timeline of the project, overview of the project's scope, new information that came in since the last meeting, and the staff-recommended motions. So here's a run-through of the public notice and timeline. A legal ad was posted prior to the November Planning Board meeting, that hearing, and then an email requesting agency comment was sent out at that time, which you have in front of you. On December 3, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval with a minor language tweak to increase clarification. A language... Or, sorry, a legal ad ran in the Missoulian prior to the January Commissioner meeting. And on January 14, I presented the project to the Target Range Sewer and Water District, which brings us up to today's meeting. In addition to that public notice, we also sent out emails specific to the project and included broader updates to our CAPS monthly newsletter. We met with agencies and posted the project information on our website. As for the project's scope, I want to briefly set the stage for what this project does and doesn't do. So subdivision regulations only apply to subdivision projects, and those are those projects related to splitting parcels or creating new lots. These updates do not change the recommended densities anywhere in the county. Land use designations do that by setting up recommendations for density. Zoning sets the regulatory density, and often in the form of a units-per-acre or a minimum lot size phrasing. Updating these regulations as proposed does not touch density or land use designations. So the focus of the proposed updates in front of you is fairly narrowly focused on three areas, including updating hazards and including, by including a high groundwater definition and a catch-all category for other hazards as identified. Changing where wider roads and more sidewalks or trails are required based on adopted land use designations, which we'll sort of dive into in a little bit more detail later. And then also changes to Chapters 5 and 6 to incorporate phased developments as changed in state law. Additionally, there are copy edits and some clarifying language throughout. So let's dive into these infrastructure requirements. The proposed updates would change how we distinguish between urban standards for more infrastructure, so wider roads or more sidewalks, and the rural standard that requires less infrastructure. This is where we get those terms "urban area" and "rural area" as it relates to the level of infrastructure. This proposed change would no longer use the city's wastewater service area, which is shown on the left. It would no longer use that boundary to determine the urban area. Instead, we would use the land use designations that were recently adopted in 2019, shown in yellow or hashed on the right side of the screen. How those areas differ is shown in this image with higher levels of infrastructure proposed in the green areas. I'll stick on that for a minute. This is where there's potential for confusion and where it may seem like density is changing. So I want to just be clear and maybe slow down a bit. We're proposing to require wider roads and more sidewalks in the higher intensity or higher intensity or higher-density land use designations. So those land use designations recommending more density would require more infrastructure. So again, where the already-adopted land use designations call for density of three dwelling units per acre or greater, more infrastructure would be required. But again, we're not changing or increasing density anywhere, simply changing the method for requiring different levels of infrastructure. So the new information that's come in since that last meeting on January 2, at that meeting, we did receive comment from the Target Range Sewer and Water District, and that took issue with the lack of notice to the board and had concerns about changing housing density in the area. Regarding the notice, the email I mentioned earlier asking for agency comment, you have that in front of you, and there's a highlighted email address that is our old and current and verified email address for the sewer district. So they did receive this email, but we did not receive a response to it. And at that meeting, they also requested in the letter and at the meeting, they requested a four-month delay in commissioner action. This board provided one-month delay and directed staff to attend the district's monthly meeting to address their concerns about housing density. meeting to address their concerns about housing density. So I attended that meeting on January 14th and talked about how the proposed changes would affect the Target Range area and the Orchard Homes area specifically. I also collected about 15 email addresses at that meeting and added those to our contact list in an effort to improve that communication. So now I'll share a few of those slides that I showed at that meeting, specific to the Target Range area. So this is the Target Range area, and you can see this is the current Appendix A, which would be updated, but currently, this is how the urban area is defined or where more infrastructure is required. And you can see that the entire Target Range Orchard Homes area is within that urban boundary and would be required to have wider roads and more sidewalk.
What do you have? You have a question?
Yeah, so it's almost as if the boundaries of urban area should say boundaries of urban area infrastructure, right? With that...
Well, I think we want to... One reason for just keeping it urban area is there's potential for new requirements to be submitted, but yeah, that could be a potential. Yeah. So this is the Target Range area entirely in that increased infrastructure area, and then this is the proposed of the same area, and you can see the yellow in this picture shows the proposed area that would require increased infrastructure. And then... Yeah, so we did get that... Let me just see. Yeah, so we did get that letter from the sewer district, and so I just wanted to take a minute to talk about the sewer district and how those areas compare. In the bottom there, you'll see a map of the Target Range Sewer District outlined in red, and then the area in the blue square above it shows where there's a proposed urban area in the Target Range Sewer District. So then recently, on February 3rd...
Christine, before you go on, could you go back to the last slide? So what's the... What's denoted by the hash hashing?
Oh, the hashing is where land use designations recommend density of eight dwelling units per acre and sidewalks, developers would not have the option to have sidewalks on one side of the road or the other, they would be required to have sidewalks on both sides of the road due to that density.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, can you just point out or mouse over your blue square area on the topo?
Sure, yeah, and I could also, just for the record, get the streets within it on the record. So this area here is from Tower to Hiberna and then Ninth Street to Third Street. So just that yellow area would be where wider roads and more sidewalks would be required.
And then can you slide your mouse down onto the sewer district and show us where that blue square is?
This will be approximate for the record.
Right.
But it's going to be about starting here up to Third, then west, and a little sort of cookie cutter down here, there, so about this area.
Great, thanks.
Sure thing. I'll continue. So yeah, on February 3rd, we got a letter from Thomas Orr, an attorney representing the sewer district. In it, he sort of echoed some concerns from the sewer district about density and lack of notice, stating the following, "Proposed amendments to the Missoula County subdivision regulations, which will allow for higher density land use in the Target Range Sewer Water District. Target Range Sewer and Water District was never notified of the proposed change to the subdivision regulations, and then until and unless these issues are addressed, Target Range Sewer and Water District stands opposed to any changes in the current subdivision/zone regulations, which would increase density in the district." So I'd like to clarify, too, that this proposal is not zoning regulations and would not affect zoning regulations in that area or anywhere in the county. And I'd also argue that the district's concerns have been addressed, given the density will not increase due to the proposal, and notice was provided and staff presented to that district board. So given that information, I'd like to... I have three staff recommended motions addressing that language clarification from planning board, just addressing a clarity around where that distinction in urban and rural is set. And then we also have a motion to include info boxes on easements that came from the clerk and recorder, and it would just recommend that when creating an easement, legal counsel is recommended for applicants. And then we have a motion for the full project. And I will conclude my staff report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Mr. Stewart?
Fred Stewart, Target Range area. So Christine, the area inside the blue box that would remain identified as urban, is that correct?
Yes.
Because it seems that that's what the sewer water board was asking, that the boundary inside the blue box be changed into rural.
Right, and we never got an official written comment on that, so we're not addressing it.
So the comment from the attorney did not address that?
I think the comment from the attorney was erroneous on all fronts, as Christine noted.
In terms of notification and so on? Yeah, okay. I didn't stay for the whole meeting that Christine was at. It seemed to be a very positive meeting in terms of exchange of information and so on. It also seemed that they were pretty clear that that's what they were looking for, was a change from urban to rural within that box that is within the Target Range Sewer Water Board District. I'm not on that board, and I was here just to see what happened.
Christine, is that... I'm assuming that is what they were requesting at the meeting?
Yeah, they did verbally speak to that they would submit a comment requesting that removal of the area from the urban designation.
But they did not?
But they didn't follow through on that.
Okay, well, that surprises me because I thought that that was the intent of the information that they were portraying to the attorney. Again, I'm not on the board, I'm just kind of interested in following up on it. Is it inappropriate, too late for me to pass on that information, that that's what the board, sewer water board, was looking for, was just a change in the designation so that all of the existing sewer water, Target Range Sewer Water Board boundary would be in the rural area, rather than some part of that being urban and then the rest of it rural? So is it too late for me to enter that as a request or the intent of that entity?
So are you speaking on behalf of the sewer and water district?
Well, I'm...
I mean, you can certainly offer that suggestion on behalf of yourself.
Right, because I'm not a member of that entity, I don't feel it would be appropriate for me to do that, but I do want the commissioners to be aware of the fact that that was my takeaway from that particular meeting, and Christine acknowledges that's what they wanted, but they didn't follow through in the way, I'm guessing, pure guess, that they didn't communicate that properly to their attorney and it didn't get put into that letter, so...
John, do you have the letter in front of you? I'm just wondering, is that something that's noted in Mr. Orr's letter?
Commissioner, I do have the letter from Mr. Orr in front of me, and I haven't reread it this afternoon, but I don't recall that that was a request that was made in the letter, specifically a request to remove the area that's delineated on the screen within the blue square or rectangle, that that area be removed from the urban standards designation.
And Fred, I don't think it necessarily has to be presented in writing, I think we understand the gist of the request that the sewer and water district made. So that's certainly something that we're taking into account today, even if we don't have it spelled out in writing before us, I think it was pretty clearly articulated to Christine at the meeting.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to be sure.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like we've exhausted the members of public in the audience, so we'll close the public hearing.
But can I ask, Tim Worley moved up a few seats, so I was wondering if...
You can always ask staff a question, yes.
Yeah, Tim Worley with CAPS, and it's actually a question I'm going to obliquely direct to Christine. If you were to develop a subdivision at one home per acre or two homes per acre within the blue square, it would not be subject to the urban standards, correct?
Are you speaking to the exceptions to urban and rural?
Right, yeah, I mean, if you're developing at one-acre lots within that blue square, you would not be subject to urban-level standards for roads or urban-level standards for walkways.
If infrastructure was not supplied to those lots or proposed for those lots, and they were one acre or larger, and there were not through connections, then the exception to the urban standard could apply, and they would build to the rural standard. So we have a pretty robust set of exceptions to these standards that can apply if a proposal is more rural in nature.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify that not everybody in that blue square is absolutely locked to the urban standards.
But if you built it out to the full capacity that would be allowed by our land use element and/or zoning and had the sufficient infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure to support that hypothetically, then you would need wider roads, additional pedestrian infrastructure and such. So it's simply providing the infrastructure that would align with what the land use calls for there.
Right.
Yeah, and just a clarification on the urban standards, we very intentionally slimmed down the roads in the urban area, and that those standards would apply now through this new approach, so that we're not, although we're talking about in some sense wider roads, they're actually not that much wider. In fact, they're significantly slimmer for urban-scale roads than they were previously, so it's not like all of a sudden people are going to be building 36-foot-wide roads within the urban area, they're generally building narrower roads within the urban area.
Which I... This is a little off-topic, but I think reflects our sustainability concerns, among others, to not overbuild the infrastructure and not simply build infrastructure to match the size of the equipment we have for maintenance, but vice versa. So, thanks, Tim. Any other questions or discussion by the commission?
No, other than, and I don't want to unravel this because it seems like it's very clear right now, but it seems like that there are two issues that were misunderstood, right? That getting at the regulations of zoning, that's something that was already decided on two years ago, and this is just a definition in subdivision review that we're addressing.
Yeah, and it was more the growth policy and land use designations that were recently updated. There's a zoning project in the works right now, so maybe in a year or two we'll get those updates.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, so I think the nub of the misunderstanding, which generated a much fuller room the last time we convened, was that somehow what we were doing here was increasing density or changing zoning, which it's not doing either. And then the other piece would be what Fred alluded to and what Christine heard at the sewer and water district meeting, and that is that the request that the area in the blue box that is currently subject to the urban standards be removed because it's within the boundary of the sewer and water district, to which I would respond. We want infrastructure that's going to support the densities of land use that's allowable, and it seems like it would be counterproductive to require lesser infrastructure in areas that really ought to have urban-style infrastructure. And also reflecting the fact that we have removed a sizable portion of the Target Range area from the prior, I guess, construct of how we approach this, subject to urban standards. This seems much more site-specific and nuanced than it was previously. Other questions?
No, unless... John Hart, do you have anything to add?
Our county attorney is shaking his head no, for the record.
So I'm going to move that the proposed text in Section 3.422 Rural Area be changed from not able to support densities of three dwellings per acre or greater to not able to support densities of two dwellings per acre or greater.
Are we good with taking all the motions together? Let's just do them all.
Okay. And then I also motioned that the following language be inserted as an info box throughout the subdivision regulations near sections where easements are required. When creating an easement, Missoula County recommends consulting with a legal counsel to ensure the easement's validity. And then also move that the proposed amendments to the Missoula County subdivision regulations, as shown in the attachments, be adopted as amended.
I will second that. And that is the final motion, correct? Okay. Any further discussion on the motions to amend the subdivision regulations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Just thank you, Christine, for going back out and performing some more outreach and helping people work through that.
Yeah, much appreciated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the commission today? Seeing none, we will be adjourned.